Welcome to today's edition of Hot Talk. I'm John the Star. Today I'm joined by Tyler Call.
Hello, nice to meet you.
How are you doing Tyler?
I am well. How about yourself sir?
Yes, I'm doing alright. Tell me a little bit about yourself.
I'm wearing a white shirt. I have hair. I'm from Minot. How, what about you?
It's very interesting. Um, I'm wearing a blue shirt. I also have hair. Originally, I'm not from Minot.
Oh, see we're different. We are not the same person.
It was not the red haired versus brown haired that gave that away.
It happens. Size difference too. But anyways, welcome into today's Minot Talk.
A lot of things have happened since Thursday.
There has been. There's been a lot going on.
For instance, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday all happened.
Yes, there was, things happened in those days too.
I'm sporting the bubbler today.
Shout out.
Just for Lisa Hermosillo.
As you should. I got my ghost. It's my classic.
That's wrong of you.
I know. The bubblers are good though. I do like bubblers.
But the flavor that she was boasting about is better than the flavor I have today. Blueberry something.
Yeah, the blue one's good. I like that one. You can't, you can't go wrong.
Yesterday, there was a, my city council, there was also a drawing of names of the candidates.
Yeah, for mayor.
That got the signatures. Turns out, there's only four candidates.
Yep. All, the four that we expected were the four that all had their signatures turned in and verified. No one tried to throw us a last second curve ball and get everything turned in Monday at like three o'clock or something, so.
Do you have that lineup?
I do. The order of it is Josiah, it's all randomized. David Lakefield had a box of the four names folded in half, picked them out. So it's Josiah Royce, it is Mark Janser, Paul Pittner, and Rob Fuller. That is the order on the ballot.
Now, you're a polling extraordinaire. Have you, does this factor into anything? The order in which the names are?
You could find people that would argue it could, but I don't think so.
Well, I'm sure you can find people that would argue. That's not hard.
You can find any kind of statistic that'll support a claim, but I don't think it's going to make any big, enough of a difference to determine to go one way or the other.
In Minot, it does not make enough of a difference. We might talk about this early polling that you have. Obviously, we're gonna be getting a lot more today.
I've been, yeah, I've been doing some over the weekends, sending the polls out to some people. And today, I'm gonna be on the ground going to the Minot Auditorium. So if you're going out to vote today, you'll probably see me standing out by one of the exits trying to get you to uh, scan a QR code and take a poll for me.
Does that mean that some of the polling right now could be skewed based off who your friends are? Are we gonna learn more about Kyler than we are gonna about polling?
Tried not to do my friends specifically, because a lot of my friends aren't overly engaged in politics. So I tried to give it to uh, some people that I know are, have some knowledge and interest in the political system.
This is good. This is good.
I'm going to, it's going to be on likely voters in Minot. I'm hoping to get maybe two hundred people total. If I can get more, great. But Thursday, I think we're gonna have, yeah.
Do you think there's enough people gonna be there today for you to get two hundred people?
I hope so, because here's, I went and voted yesterday.
Good for you bud.
Thank you. So when I was there, I was there about ten thirty. And I, I was the only one there.
You were the only one there.
Outside of the voting volunteers. And I, it's obviously a one question ballot. I turned it in and low and behold, I took a peek at the machines. They count how many ballots have been processed by them. I guess I can't a hundred percent guarantee the accuracy of it.
You hacked the machine?
Well, I didn't hack it. The numbers are presented right on the main screen of them. But in total, I was the five hundred ninety first vote cast between the two machines. Um, as I was leaving, another person was walking in. So I would say by about eleven o'clock yesterday, there was maybe six hundred total votes cast for it. So not a ton of early voting turnout, but also today's the day that it's, it's the big day. This is what we're here for.
I think I messed up.
Why is that?
Because I think I said that I would do the ice bucket challenge based off this election.
Did, did we intend it to be the mayoral one?
I feel like we did. I firmly feel like we did. But I, I, because one of the comments was do it at the mayoral debate. And there's no way that, so we totally were talking about this election.
Definitely, I think.
I feel very confident.
Made it about this one, even if we might have intended it to be for the fall.
I'm gonna be getting cold.
It'll be chilly. Find a good day to do it too, when it's like ninety out.
All those days might be gone.
Speaking of though, two weeks from today, mayoral debate downtown Minot. We are hosting it. I know. I put it into perspective right there a little bit. It's almost here, it's happening. I, I got, it's gonna be great. It's even at, yeah, we do. I'm gonna be going hard on that today for you as well. But last night at city council, when I was, uh, it was wrapping up, I was just there at the end. I missed the first part. But guess what was on, because the city displays different uh, screens that kind of, different ads for things going on in the city. Guess what was up there?
I thought you.
Our debate.
Yes.
Yeah, we made it to the city. We're legit now.
We're going places folks.
I love it. I'm ready.
Yeah, that's way cool.
But um, do you wanna start with city council or the sales tax?
I wanna start with today's voting day.
It is. We should start there.
Yeah, I'm gonna get out and vote today.
Good. I, I hope you do. Vote. Poll's been open for two hours already. If anyone was a early bird, really got up there early.
How many people, so how many people do think votes today? Do we get fifteen hundred voters today?
I'm gonna say we have early voting between six fifty and seven fifty. So today, I'm going to say we have.
Yesterday, how many votes do you say were, had been cast?
Five ninety-two when I was leaving. So, and again, I can't guarantee how accurate those numbers are.
Didn't you have some conversations, some people saying that?
I was talking to the staff there and they said it had been pretty low turnout. Room looked pretty empty a lot. So I, I really think that it's probably an accurate number with that five ninety-one, but I can't, yeah, I can't guarantee it. But it sounds, it sounds right. And now today, I'm thinking maybe if we can get two thousand people, I think that'd be good. If we can get twenty-five hundred total votes in this, I mean, I don't think that's good, but I think relatively in this vacuum, it's a good thing.
Yeah, makes sense. Makes sense. Dawson says that you're right. You don't, your friends don't engage in politics, but you're trying to be a leader in that group.
Shout out Dawson. One of our active listeners.
Absolutely. Appreciate you Dawson.
You're the legend, my guy.
You are. Alright, so voting's gonna be happening today. Where's it gonna happen at?
Minot Municipal Auditorium.
Oh, I know where that's at.
Yes, it is going to be in the armory. So.
In the armory, okay. So do you have to walk through the front door? Can you walk through the back door?
I think either way, it's, you're good to go. If you go through the front, you're gonna have to go downstairs.
It's gonna be a long walk.
Could be. So I would recommend parking in the, on the north side of the building and going in that uh, back door into the uh, armory itself. But I, I know last year during the primaries, both doors were open.
Very cool.
I was trying to have to figure out which one had more traffic going into to do my exit polling last year.
Gotcha. So, so you're gonna be doing some exit polling?
I won't be doing specifically exit polling. I'm not gonna ask about the park, uh, the park votes.
So you don't even care about the park board?
I do, but I'm.
Because we're not gonna be going live?
Yeah, we're not gonna go live before the vote's over until Thursday again. So what's the point in doing exit polling to not yap about it that afternoon?
Right.
Because last year when we did it, we went live at two. So and I was out in the morning getting that exit polling on.
Absolutely. No, I remember that man.
And I gotta just toot our horn a little bit. We called the top four in the city council race from that exit polling.
So put a lot of stock in our polls that we have going on today?
Exactly. Like, it's at least forty percent accurate.
Yeah, dude, the numbers are interesting so far though. It's not quite where you'd think they'd be.
Not yet. And I, it's, it's limited so far. I actually just had another person turn one in. So shout out whoever's listening and did a poll. But yeah, they aren't um, oh, it's interesting so far. I look forward to getting to share everything on Thursday. It's gonna, it's gonna be fun.
For sure.
Have some printouts and everything, or some graphic, at least a graphic. But no, uh, park board election today. Make sure everyone's out and about. Again, this is gonna be a big issue for Minot. It's not on an exact parallel to, but it's very similar to the school, uh, the new school vote that happened a few years back, where something that not a lot of people are gonna go out and vote for is going to affect a lot of people.
So I think the thing that sticks out to me is there's no, I never saw an opposition campaign. I feel like there's more opposition to the one back in the day. Um, so what does that mean for, does, do people care enough that they would go out on their own without being highly educated on this? Obviously, some have been educated on this, but it's been a, it just, there's, there's just, like I said, there's not a lot of information opposing it.
No, it's, it's a, you're, you're seeing one side of it really. It's the pro side coming obviously from the park board. They want to see this happen. Yeah, you can't, and they're not putting out anything that's wrong. It's all factual information. And it's good information. But yeah, like you said, there's no one that's coming outright to oppose this heavily. So that's the interesting thing is they're going, because there's no opposition, are we going to see it landslide one way or the other?
Right.
Or is it going to, and are you gonna see more people coming out in favor of it just because you're seeing the one side pushing for it? Or because you, are you gonna have the contrarians come out because you have that one side pushing and everyone's gonna say, well, if they're pushing, that must be a motive behind it. So we're gonna come out and vote against this.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think because there's going to be a lower turnout, you could see if that, one of those things happens, it could end up skewing it one way.
Yeah, but what do you, what way do you think it goes?
How do I think the vote will land?
Yeah, is it gonna pass?
I think so. I think it passes.
I'm feeling the same way.
I think it passes and I think people are mad that it passes.
Yeah, and then they complain about the, like, probably storyline of events will be passes. People start paying eight percent sales tax.
Say, where did this come from?
Where did this come from? Why didn't the city communicate this? This is wrong that the city's just doing stuff like this. And then they, they go and they listen to Minot Talk and they're like, oh.
These guys have been talking about this for months.
And then they go subscribe. And they become more informed in the future.
Yes.
Because they've listened to Minot Talk.
You're darn right, my guy.
That's probably what happens.
I think that's what should happen.
Then they show up to the mayoral debate on June seventeenth.
You're darn right.
And they're ready for the, for the uh, August ele- election.
August fifth?
And there is five thousand people that vote for it in the August fifth election.
That would be awesome. If there was five thousand people that got out to vote for that, that'd be awesome. I'd love to see that.
And that only happens because of Greg.
You think so?
Yeah, good old Greg. Greg is the catalyst in that one.
Greg.
Remember the, the social media person with the city of Minot?
Yep, 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 yep.
The fake person with the city of Minot?
Greg gets everyone out to vote.
Honestly, we haven't seen him in a bit. He, he did not make it out of winter. Winter was hard on the guy.
That's true. It's winter. Can't blame him.
Yeah, he's gonna rest up this summer, so he's ready for next.
Ready for the next cold spell to come in.
Yep. Uh, good times. No, for real though, I hope, I hope that if people aren't, do, do find that they don't know where this half percent sales tax making eight percent comes from and all that, I hope that they become more informed. I hope that something like that, there's more avenues to be more informed now. Like, it's becoming more and more easily, easily accessible.
Like the city's putting out a bi-weekly podcast.
Yeah, they are. They, they preview the uh, preview the city council. There's a very specific reason with that one.
Yeah, but, which is great. Yeah, and they're, they have, I know they mentioned the sales tax vote in, in the last one. So like, there's, obviously, there's us, the best way to find out about these things.
Of course.
And, but you have multiple outlets in town that have these things. It's, it's not hard to look this stuff up. So it's, so much again is just people being engaged. And I think that, like you said, this fall, we're gonna see a lot better version of it.
Yeah, I, I think so. It's gonna be, people are gonna be way more concerned about that one, I think.
Think, think we're gonna have, how many floats are we gonna have in the state fair parade for mayoral candidates?
You know what? I honestly think maybe like one, if that. Honestly.
Cause typically, the mayor's at the front of the parade. He's in like the first car.
So he will be, right? So we'll have one float.
Well, who's gonna, is, is it gonna be Janser? But he's not the mayor. He's the acting mayor.
He is mayor for, for something like that, he is mayor.
What if he wants his own float? I think it would be, like, I think you made a great point there. I think if, if he's thinking about it, and if he can, and he has that route, he should take that because he's then seen as the mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Then he's more incumbency.
Yep. It gives the air of incumbency at that point.
Yeah, for sure.
I, I just thought of that off my head. I, yeah.
What do you think?
That was a random question there to go down the float route, but hey.
Cause that's, that's the thing that determines races right there, is who is, yeah, the most miserable four hours of your life.
Yeah, sitting in like ninety degree Saturday morning July heat.
People upset at you because they have bags of candy, but it turns out you ran out of candy.
Yep, sorry. You get to the Berdick Bridge and all of a sudden you get over and the candy's starting to run out.
Yeah, which is crazy. That's the part of that, like, cause we've done it a couple of times with our church. And it's like, guys, the parade doesn't start until the turn.
Yeah.
So why are we handing out candy before the parade starts in massive amounts?
You're just trying to get everyone involved. We want everybody to get some candy, man.
It's epic. Alright, so go away. Um, voting day is happening today. Make sure you get out, Minot Municipal Auditorium and Armory, uh, that happens, when does, when does uh, when it closes?
Polling opened at seven and it is open until seven.
Alright, so it closes at seven PM tonight.
If you're there around, you know, eleven to one, you'll probably see me. And then if you're there this evening after work, you'll probably see me again.
If you see Kyler today, don't be scared. Engage with the guy. He won't bite today.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna engage with you frankly. I'm.
Frankly, he's gonna engage with you, so.
I'm going to walk up and have a QR code and say, take a poll, please.
Frankly, just go ahead and use his poll and frankly, get us some more data. So we can frankly, provide some great stats for you.
Be, be pretty unironic if they.
Yep. What a terrible word. It's just the most, it's, it's terrible.
Jonathan loves when I say that.
Let's go. Next, next topic.
Okay, let's move on to city council last night.
Give us the rundown.
Big, a couple of big things. Um, first, first announcement, uh, started at the beginning, uh, city manager Harold Stewart said that he's still waiting on a couple of background checks and some auxiliary things for the police chief recommendation. So expect that to probably come at the next city council meeting on the sixteenth.
That's epic.
Yeah. So I, I can't wait to see how that plays out.
Yeah.
I have no idea what's gonna happen with it. I.
Right.
We've talked about this at length, but yeah, expect June sixteenth to be the date that um, we get the official recommendation from the city manager for the next chief of police.
Very cool.
And then first item on the agenda, they had some consent stuff that they went through. It was, looked like an abbreviated list, but as I was texting Lisa Hermosillo yesterday when I was on my way, I was like, oh, it's gonna be a short one, because why not, right? And turned into a three hour meeting.
Yeah.
You jinxed it. I did, but I had to make it that way. But first item on the agenda, it was a conversation about changing the policy of how much Minot keeps in its reserve funds.
Okay.
And this ended up being a, took, it was, it was a good portion of the meeting. They, so right now, the city of Minot mandates via city ordinance that it keeps at minimum one twelfth of um, the, the yearly budget in reserve. So it's, that is the mandatory minimum of one month of general fund as reserve. Now, according to Harold Stewart, general practice for a lot of this stuff is like thirty to fifty percent.
Yeah.
And those numbers are, I think, twenty-five to fifty percent is what he said. And the city was then looking at changing this to mandating it from a thirty percent to a fifty percent range. But the policy that was actually trying to be set has that maximum up at seventy-five percent. So that's where a lot of the discussion was coming from, was how high do we want this to be? So the first thing that came up, uh, Alderman Mike Blessam made an amendment to change it from that seventy-five percent top to a range of thirty to fifty percent.
Gotcha.
And so I, that was one thing that I think most of the council agreed on last night, was that it probably shouldn't be a range.
Right.
Because that way, when it's, yeah, we, we can build up for some expected projects. And then when we've used that, we can cut back a little bit. We're not taking as much away. And we can have, you know, we still have three, four months in reserve, but it's less than that, you know, eight, nine months that we could have too.
Right, yeah. That makes sense.
So when Blessam had, they went around the horn a little bit. David Lakefield, the legend himself, came up, had the, had some great insight into it. Um, and he was also in favor of the range. Uh, and let me see, I have a quote from him too, that I put in my article I put up this morning. Um, he said, yeah, when they were, so looking at that, it'll help better forecast unanticipated expenses that we can weather that without having to come back and scramble for a funding source to cover it. So you know, big, big unexpected thing. Uh, this is the extreme, extreme of it, but you know, the flood that happened like fourteen years ago, something like that. Or, you know, something a little bit more understandable, probably sim- more similar to the big blizzard we had three years ago. Or shut stuff down for a while. And all of a sudden, now we have to, it's the end of the year and we have to have a ton of overtime getting thrown out to our uh, street cleaning crews and everything, so they can really get everything fixed. So that's where a lot of those unexpected expenses more likely will come from. But then you're going to also have like the thing that we've talked about for a long time now, the new police department that's going to eventually be coming. That's something that, you know, you can start saving up some reserves to start to put towards that in the long run too.
Absolutely. Okay, so that'll be good. The range, I think the range is a good thing.
Yeah.
Um, just based off what you're talking about.
So with the amendment that Blessam put forward, uh, guess how the vote went on it?
Three, three.
You betcha. And then, so after that, it failed three, three with the amendments. Now you're back to the original policy that's being put forward. And uh, so Blessam didn't want that to go forward. If that's gonna be the policy, he would, he said he would rather have just seen them pretty much keep the status quo, which is, obviously, there's a minimum, but that's not the minimum that they keep too. They keep best practice standards of around thirty percent to, I think as of right now, as of last night, uh, director Lakefield said it was sitting around fifty percent.
Okay.
So that's, Minot's gonna continue doing that in the foreseeable future.
Yeah.
Because that uh, policy that got put forward, once again, when everyone had their say on it, got voted on, three, three vote. So.
Gotcha.
And again, this is likely something that will come up again.
Right, right, right.
Probably in the thick of the budget season.
And I'll be alright.
Yep, after we have a full council.
So hopefully.
Yeah, hope fingers crossed and it doesn't go into December and that we can have a full council by September.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be interesting. Okay, so budget stuff.
Yeah, that was, that was the big one for the start of it.
Huge discussion that was on there. Yeah, it was a long time.
Yep. And I, again, this is something that we'll end up seeing again this fall. So it's pretty much, how do you want that range to end up being? I think it'll probably, it might end up having a slightly smaller floor. I know Alderman Samuelson was talking about some possible mandates of three twelfths, which is a quarter. So it could be as, you know, the low end could be twenty-five percent and maybe they end up figuring out a compromise on the high end. It gets to like fifty-five, sixty percent kind of thing. So you have a little bit wider range that way.
What do you think about the rise in public appearances?
I love it.
Says, I love it.
Yes, I'd like to see more engagement possible.
A slight hesitancy there.
No, I love to see the most public engagement as possible.
Yeah.
And there was actually, during the public appearances, there's a couple of really interesting things that came up too. Uh, the first one is the Our Lady of Grace Church, which is by Edison School. They're building a big food bank there.
Which this was something that was talked about quite a bit at council.
Yep.
And, and planning commission.
Yeah, over the past year effectively. And last, like, summer, fall is when we first heard about it. And so I think, and so this is something that's been set up, it's happening. And now that it's happening, um, there's gonna be some construction going on. So the city planning commission sent out those notices to the local residents in the area saying, hey, there's gonna be some extra work being done here for this zoning project that we approved at the, at the church. Well, apparently, some residents aren't very happy about that, because it's going to be, it not only will, but it already has apparently been very disruptive to the neighborhood life.
Okay.
You have people coming in that are saying, hey, you got these massive trucks trying to drive around, uh, semi trucks that are hauling food in and now construction stuff into this location saying, hey, these little side streets that they're on aren't big enough to handle these and they're struggling and they're messing things up for us. And I think at this point, it pretty much is what it is. The church can effectively, it's been zoned appropriately now, so the church can pretty much do whatever they want at this stage on their own property. And there's some residents that are upset. And one of them came forward and she was talking for a while last night. And she even mentioned the possibility of bringing a petition uh, forward to try to, you know, get residents in the area on board. I don't know what it would do in theory.
At this point, it seems like it's just too late.
Yeah, it's, you know, you can argue maybe they're, do you want to, so this brings up a bigger topic. Do you want to have the city put notices out to neighborhoods whenever they're in a planning commission topic?
Well, I, no, no, except when you're all of a sudden are gonna turn that into mixed use, I think maybe.
That's, that's reasonable. Maybe there should have been a, a better, sooner heads up on this issue specifically.
They said, like, it's gonna take four, four neighborhood lots, right? So like, that's a huge deal. I would wanna know if somebody was gonna combine four neighborhood nots, lots right next to me. And even if they're gonna build a massive house, like, what about, I don't want that?
Yeah.
You know, because that's a little bit exceptional.
And it sounds like most of the neighbor, I shouldn't say most. It sounds like there's a vocal portion of the neighborhood that doesn't wanna see that happen.
It sounds like there's, vocal might be even too strong, because they didn't all, didn't show up.
That's true. She said that a lot of them were.
Old, elderly.
Yeah, older people in that neighborhood that didn't wanna shake, rock the boats and stir anything up. So they just kinda hung back and let her be the voice.
Be the voice. And so that's understandable. Um, but.
Unfortunately, I think it's kind of moot point. Yeah, done at this point.
Because of it, but it does bring it, because this comes up a lot with the notification stuff. You guys send one letter and then that's supposed, you know, and it might just be, this is potentially, who knows what that letter says? Yeah, it might be a little bit too late. Um, seems like there should be something a little more active that happens there.
I, I, I agree. I feel like this could be the, or part of a bigger narrative to try to find a better notification process.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't know what that would be or what it would look like. And I don't think you can start sending out like three of them. You know, like you have like three letters pre, uh, when, when the item first comes to the discussion, then you have one when it's at the commission meeting or the city council, and you have a post one. I, that might be accessible, but I think you gotta at least have one before the vote is finalized.
I'll say this though, if you're doing something major, I think it would be interesting, not as a direct, like, not something that determines, makes a final decision, but having somebody from the city go knock a few doors in the area and be like, hey, this is something that we're talking about doing in this area. Just wanted to get your feedback on that. And even if it was five doors, nothing crazy, but just a little bit of that, I think that would be good. Because you get the raw truth from that. And then you also tell the neighborhood, like, we care about your opinion. You know, it would take an hour. I wouldn't take that long.
No.
Just do it and whatever. And I'm sure that there's times where they do stuff similar to that, but it, I feel like that would.
Like a two block radius.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be every door. You just get, you know, and it doesn't need to be something where it's set in stone where it has to be done. Not saying that, but just an informal thing. And then when a conversation comes like that, we, you can say, you know what? We, we did talk with some of the neighborhoods, neighbor, neighbors in that neighborhood. Um, and overall, they, they sound like they were fine with it, or, you know, we were.
Vocally was opposed to it kind of thing.
We were aware that there was some contentious about it. So we brought that up, but there's nothing we could do to directly stop that, you know, whatever it might be.
That's fair. Yeah, I think that's, I, I think that would be a good, a good thing to try to do. And just as like even a passive thing where you're just.
Yeah, it's not, not mandatory, not a requirement, but something that just says, you know what?
Or that best practice kind of stuff.
We, we care about you. We hear you.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, that's a good call. Another interesting thing that happened at the public appearances last night too, that actually had, came back to a vote later and had something come of it, was the owner of Arnie's two point O got up and she spoke on behalf of the Indian Base Camp Kitchen, which, and this, this was a really neat, neat little thing. So there was some, there, there were some issues with the timing of when Indian Base Camp opened. They opened later last year and they were trying to get their uh, dinner liquor license.
Right.
Set up and everything. So it costs like thirty-two hundred dollars to get that and fees and everything to the city. Well, lo and behold, they didn't end up operating with it at that time. It didn't really work out. And fast forward, and then they went out of town for a while. Now, fast forward to now, they're back operating full time and they want the license in full. So they go and they have to pay for the fee. Now, six months into the year, they're missing out. They already paid for it in twenty twenty-four and didn't use it. Now they're having to pay for it again and use it for half a year before having to pay for it a third time going into twenty twenty-six.
Gotcha.
So what the owner of Arnie's did, she came up and was saying, hey, these guys are trying to do, you know, they're, they're trying to start a business. They're trying to operate. They have a second business that they're gonna eventually try to apply for another dinner license for kind of thing. Like, let's, let's give them, let's try not to give them too much of a hard time here. So she wants, wanted the city to either waive or give some, some kind of a credits to the company, so they didn't have to pay three times in a year and a half period. And the city council went and acted on it. Following public appearances and following a lot of presentations, uh, older woman Lisa Olson put it, uh, wanted to call the vote back, because it was shot down earlier. And she wanted to bring it back to the table to apply a credit to the twenty twenty-five bill. So that twenty twenty-four one that they already paid for, it pretty much, it's, it's just, it's a wash at this stage. They will only have to pay it the once. And then again, next year when they renew.
Yeah.
And city council voted on it and it passed. So that was a.
What do you think about that?
I thought that was awesome. I love to see that. I think that was a, I, I don't think that they should have. I thought that was awesome. I love to see that. I think that was a, I, I don't think that they should have to pay it. Three times in such a short timeframe, especially when they never used it in twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I, I, so I hear you on that. I don't think I'm on the same wavelength as you though.
Sure. You think they should have paid it?
Well, my deal is this, is I, I feel bad about all that. Because it sounds like there's some difficulties and maybe there's, I don't know what their full reasons were. For not being able to. Use it last year. And then it sound like there was language difficulties, which is completely understandable. The second business. I, I think there has to be a basis here, like if it's not profitable for you to buy the liquor license and not buy the liquor license. So there's no group discounts or anything like that. So I mean, I, I get why it's, it could be an important factor, but. Let's not make a decision off that.
That's, that's fair. And I don't think this is something that you should make as a blanket decision either. I think.
And that was, yeah, the reason why it didn't get voted through in the first place is they didn't want the precedent where, you know, there's. And then there, there's an opportunity for there to be a loophole. And then if you don't give the loophole, then they go back and sue you. That's literally what they were trying to protect the first time or that was part of the conversation at least, the first time around. And I, I, I think it's cool that it came back. I, I, I'm not upset with the decision. But they went and were very patient with this company the entire time.
Yeah, so I remember this being talked about back in December and stuff.
And like they tried very hard. And so I've, I feel like. I feel like that, that I, a lot's been done. Uh, that's I guess, to, to leave it, to keep it simple. A lot's been done to help them. And I hope that they're successful. And I think, but to go to the point of saying, like, that's so that we support businesses and stuff like that. I feel like. There was a lot of support given, like you're saying that the, the city didn't try to until this point. No, the city tried very hard.
Yeah, it's the, the city clerks, it sounds like she went above and beyond her way to try to help these guys through some of the situation.
Right. And I, I feel like all that's just thrown out the window. It's like, all right, now, now we can actually help them. No, that's not true. We've tried to help them the entire time. And that just kept on falling and now, now suddenly we were able to, I don't know. That, that's the only part that felt weird to me.
That's fair. And I see where you're coming from with that. Cause I, 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 this, this can't be a blanket thing. This has to be something that if it ever comes up again, it has to be done case by case. Um, so there's some specifics that go into this. Uh, obviously the language thing's not helpful, but that's part of life. Then you have, I know they were gone for a couple of months at the beginning of the years or the end of last year kind of timeframe where they went home. Uh, for a while. So there's just a lot of little things that came forward with it and it, I don't know. In the end, it's three grand. So I don't see in the big scheme of the city, I don't see it as a big issue specifically, but I think you do make.
So then why don't we just remove that?
Cause they still have to pay it in principle. They still paid it once. It's just the fact that they didn't use it until now. And now that's only a half a year and then they gotta pay it again. Like I think this is trying to show that mine up promotes small businesses and wants them to be successful. And not overcharge them.
I mean, you using, like, when's the last time you used your insurance?
That's a great question. Like four years ago.
You still have to pay. I, I don't know. I.
And they'll have to pay next year for it too.
I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad that, yeah, but the argument is that they didn't use it.
Because of some specific circumstances that came up, whatever they might be.
That was all out. Alright, so I'm sounding like a really terrible guy.
No, you're good.
Cause I, I have no problem with it, but they, all, all the like. All, none of the, none of it involved the city. The city said, you know what? We're gonna give you a gift of three thousand dollars. That's what the city said last night. We're gonna give you a gift of three thousand dollars just to help you, to help to support your business. It was nothing where there were. The city went above and beyond the entire time. Didn't work out. And then at the end of it, they're like, alright, it didn't work out. So here's a gift of three thousand bucks. That's what happened.
There's, and, and I get, you're, you're right. And there's a potential that it could be setting a precedent that. Could have some murky waters, but I just don't know if there'll be. Enough, I mean. Three years from now, if a similar situation arises, how, what are the odds that they even look back and find the situation?
Yeah, but it does that, this precedent where, okay, it's June, there's a chance it might work out. There's a chance it might not. Let's go buy it. And then if it doesn't work out, let's go to the city and say, hey, uh, extending circumstances came up. We weren't able to use our liquor license. Can we get a refund for the three thousand bucks?
And that's fair. And I guess the one thing I have for that is the city didn't technically offer a refund or pay out back. It was a credit towards the next one. So.
A credit towards the next one.
Use it for the next, they, they don't want the liquor license anymore.
No, I'm not saying that. That was not your, you're going outside the analogy. I'm saying you're starting a business. That you're gonna get a legal license for and you're like, oh, we might need it this year. We might not. So you get and then, and then you uh, don't use it. And then. And then you say, okay, can we get that credited towards the next one?
For next year.
We didn't use it.
Yeah, and I, that could be a potentially a slippery slope, I guess, on the surface.
I mean, it's not gonna come up a ton. I get that. It's not gonna be a, there's not gonna be a hundred of these a year.
Theoretically, I'm okay with it. I think.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I don't hate this one.
Okay, then how does that also filter down into other like?
Industries.
Industries and, and even consumers. And if I go out of town for a month, have to still pay my garbage bill.
It's true.
Still have to pay my water bill, have to pay water for the water to run off my property into this.
I guess, why don't you, we, we can apply for a hardship through the city and see if they'll give us a credit.
But they won't.
You can use this as your reference then, as the precedent.
But I don't want that though.
No, and I get that, but it's, well, we're here now.
Yeah, that, to me, I, overall, it's probably a great thing that it was given to them. I'm not upset by them, by that, that happening.
Bigger picture of what this could lead to.
Yeah, is, it's. The city's been put in a lot of difficult situations when it comes to supporting businesses and this whole, the whole argument of. You know, we need to be open to business. So we go and we do that and we need to be open to businesses and. All that, but then. You with the childcare. City needs to be entrepreneur focused and give credits to the childcare. Because that's a really difficult industry to work in. Comes to the liquor license. We need to, we capped it many years ago, which is anti entrepreneurial and I agree with that. So now we need to remove it. Like there's just these. Weird things that are coming up recently, all around the premise of being open to business. And it's like, there's no core principle to it. It's whatever sounds good at that time on that issue. There's not consistency across the issues.
That's fair.
And.
So is there some potential politicking going on with it then? Is that why?
I don't think there's any politicking going on with a three thousand dollar credit to, I'm, so I'm looking at the broader picture. In certain situations, yes, there's probably politicking going on, but overall and across the myriad of the issues, I don't think so.
I guess. My, uh, you're, you're right on the big picture on this specific one. I think the only way you would have seen a chance for that is if someone would have voted no. Then you can argue against that or whatever.
Which is, I, I don't even know why they reversed it because they knew everything going into it. Like there was no, no information provided.
I think a lot of the reasoning came from because another business owner came forward with it. I think that's my take on it. Why they felt that. Compelled to do so. I can't say specifically, I guess, but that's felt like what older woman Olson was alluding to when she brought it back up.
Yeah, nice to, well, we're gonna go to a quick break. We'll be back in a minute and fifteen seconds.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real time data, detailed reports. And actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services. So that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, honey.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at Me Mexico. The rooftop patio is open. And ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouthwatering Mexican entrees. Me Mexico, South Broadway.
Hi.
Hi, we're back. So, um, that wasn't the only public appearance though.
Oh, there's a few more.
There's a few more.
And we had.
Harold Stewart got met, called out.
He did.
For uh, for applying for jobs. I, I'm sorry. I understand the sentiment, but I can't, I can't buy into that one.
No, like I don't think Harold is not committed to Minot. I think he's fully committed to Minot. I think he does, he continues to do a good job.
I mean, I think he continues to do a good job. I think by default, by saying that you're applying for jobs, you're not fully committed to where you're at. Um, so I agree with that sentiment, but the idea that we want to go, if you come to my night. And you're gonna apply for a different job, then we're gonna be upset at you is a precedent that's gonna get it where we're going to only be able to hire internally. That's fine. That is what it is. But I mean, even Tom Joyce, say Harold Stewart leaves, Tom Joyce gets promoted to city manager. Is he gonna want it if he knows that in five years that if he applies for another job, there's gonna be a whole. Storm that comes at him of people like, you never were, you were always a player. You just wanted our money. You didn't care about Minot and all this like.
You can't make, this, this isn't a public office that they're, that they're running for. This is a.
Even if it's a public office, those are stepping stones too.
Exactly. That, this is, this is the next step in a person's individual career. Um, you obviously you want them to stick around as long as possible if they're doing a good job, but. Uh, you can't blame them on a personal level for wanting to better themselves and find a better situation.
I don't think you can get mad at that.
No, and the, when he got called out, there was, it was part of a broader conversation.
It was accessibility. Which is something that I'm glad that there's a lot of attention being shown to that.
No, Billy, Billy Gunderson uh, makes some great points when she comes up and. There, there are a lot of accessibility issues around town, especially with construction happening. And that was a lot of the specific points that got brought up. Was trying to get through some construction areas and this shows that it was. It, it wasn't easily navigable for someone in a wheelchair. And. She ended up calling out Ackerman Estold on it, um, bec- for not having it properly signed prior. Um, obviously she called out Harold Stewart and it was. I can't blame her for why she's calling him out.
Yeah, for sure.
Not, you can argue the, how. Some of the finer points of it, but generally I don't think it's a, there's anything wrong with that.
Yep, no, I, I agree. I think that all that is fair game. So, um. Hopefully something happens with some of that stuff.
Yeah, like I, and I don't even know. Specifically, like obviously, I, I guess specifically you could have had the signs up in the more timely fashion. But in a lot of the cases with the construction happening, I don't know how much can be done to. Go out of the way to improve accessibility in an area that's being worked on, I guess.
Yeah, no, I, I hear that and I don't know what the rules are on that, but I know that that's. Every industry gets to deal with it. So, so you should have to address it too.
Yeah, and it's part of inclusion for everyone in the community at that point.
And, and at this point, it's not something that's optional. It doesn't, it's no longer an optional thing.
No, ADA requirements mandate a lot of these things. And I don't know what the ADA requirements are, what they look like, what the specifics of it are. Especially in comparison to what we have going on now. So I can't speak if it's accurate or if it's not, but generally speaking. ADA requirements mandate a lot of things in today's society.
Yep, absolutely.
Like most businesses, unless you have like a special reason not to, if you're a public business. You have to have some kind of ADA accessible door. Um, and it's, that's just the starting grounds of it. It goes from there.
Right, so, um, it, uh, that was definitely an interesting one. And then of course Josiah Royce.
Mainoral candidate.
Mainoral candidate. And I'll, I'll be honest, this is, may not be the best thing, but I, I just don't know how I, I don't love that. Just don't love that. And I understand that it's probably the, it's probably a good thing. It's probably, it is a fair thing and it's probably a right thing for him to do. I just don't know how I feel about it, about using it. He hasn't politic ever since that's been said, but he goes and he addresses things. And then he, um. Will al- also bring up new stuff, of course. I, I, what, what bothers me about it is, is just that that's not the intent of the public appearances. Like that it's a skewed.
That's fair.
That's, that's simply what bothers me about it. Other than that, I, I think it's, I mean, when you're not an incumbent and obviously.
You're not sitting on the council.
Right, uh, just viewing all of them as having a leg up there by sitting on the council. Um.
You gotta find a way to get your name out somehow.
But it's not even, it, yes, you do, but it's also trying to utilize the same platform that they have. Because he can go and get his name out in other areas, but he doesn't have this. City council like.
Very much so.
Just as such an exclusive avenue right there.
It's something that is guaranteed to happen every two weeks, maybe three at the outset, depending on dates, but that's minutia. So.
Twice a month?
Yes, there we go. That's the right way to put it. And it's something that they're guaranteed to be up there. They have an open platform to speak. Um, they use it handily, uh, Fuller, Pittner. Uh, Janser to a lesser degree, but Janser's the one that's leading the meetings. So there's only so much that can be done there. So they all have that ability to be up there and speak on a regular basis. So Josiah is trying to take his own route to get up there in front of the public as well. Because obviously, you know, they're not as. Well watched as we would hope they are, but they have a couple hundred people that are watching these every night.
Yeah, I, I actually feel like that's pretty decent.
It is. I remember and I can't, I, I, one time like six months ago, I looked at like Charleston, South Carolina's live stream. It popped up in my YouTube recommendations. There was like thirty people watching it and that's Charleston, South Carolina.
And that's the town we're trying to be like, so we're whooping them.
And that was, I remember that, yeah.
We're whooping them right now.
We got more civic and at least. Some form of engagement.
Right, so.
But no, uh, I, Josiah comes up and he makes his points and a lot of it. References back to where he, how he wants to run and how he would act as if he were mayor. Um, he says he wants to be the constitutional mayor and one thing, uh, I can't think of his name, but, uh.
Dave Wiley?
No, the, the sheriff.
Oh, uh, Mac.
Yeah, Sheriff Mac, uh, who is a constitutional sheriff that has a somewhat of a nationwide following. Apparently at the end of Josiah's uh, appearance, said that he's going to be coming to Minot. And he implied that he's going to speak at city council. I don't know if that's necessarily true. I should have asked him that afterwards, but. Sounds like Richard Mack, that's the name, is going to be coming to Minot.
Nice, that'd be interesting.
It would be.
Do a podcast with him?
Yeah, there you go.
That'd be fun.
Looking forward to interviewing him?
I'm looking forward to interviewing the mayoral candidates.
That's fair. That's coming up soon too.
That is coming up soon. Um, so we have gotten some questions from some candidates about it. And that's something that we'll be working on now, uh, probably this week, getting those interviews set up and then we plan on releasing them. Uh, in the lead up to the mayoral debate on the, uh, seventeenth. Uh, make sure that you're ready for that.
Yeah, it's gonna be great as always. We got plenty of seats to fill. It's free admission. We've got, uh. Gonna have a nice spread there. Gonna, doors open at six, gonna have a little possibility for the meet and greet if the candidates are available. And of course, debate will start at seven, go up to ninety minutes, depending on how it plays out. And it's gonna be great.
It's gonna be a good time. Looking forward to that. Make sure that you have that on your schedule. I, I think it's something that if you live in Minot, you're gonna wanna be at.
Yep, and I guess any other, some other wrap ups from city council?
Uh, not from city council, but just in general, there was like this big time article that you finally got out.
Yeah, well, before we get there, one thing from city council that I gotta point out, at the very end of the meeting, uh, city engineer Lance Meyer came out and he did a. Massive presentation on the breakdown of city uh, sewers uh, fees and. How those are calculated, where they came from. So if you're ever interested in Minot city sewer system and how your fees are calculated, uh, the history of it. Great, like twenty minute presentation.
She, she puts together an article on that.
I could, that would be.
That'd actually be a good article.
Might be. But speaking of an article, yeah, I finally got to, uh, we, we finally got to release the Dunseeth article.
Yeah, absolutely, we did. Um, yeah, that, uh, what, what some of the, your high points from that?
Oh, I think my most interesting thing that I got from that was former governor Burgum. Now secretary of the interior, when he was governor, uh, he chaired a commission that's called the North Dakota Industrial Commission. It's a three person committee. Uh, the governor, attorney general and agriculture commissioner. And they hand, they do a lot of things. The NDIC. Has its hands in a massive amount of things. That, that's a conversation for a different day. Uh, and a massive amount of things around the state. And so they handed out grant money to a company called Packet Digital. And so they handed out grant money to a company called Packet Digital. Packet Digital was run by a lady named Terry Zimmerman. Who she is, is a former executive of a company called Great Plains Software.
What's Great Plains Software?
Doug Burgum's old company. So when he was the owner of Great Plains Software, she worked for him, was a high level executive for him. After he ended up selling out, she eventually started her own company Packet Digital. Uh, when he sold to Bill Gates and when that transitionary period happened of over like a decade. At some point, she ended up starting her company Packet Digital. And now they are, they, they do a lot of battery and drone research products. They do a lot of, uh, government contracting through the military. And long story short, when Burgum was the chair of the NDIC, he ended up handing out of millions in grant money to her. And also at that time, she was also a board member. And this doesn't necessarily disqualify someone from getting a grant from a separate program. But she was also a board member of the North Dakota Development Fund, which means, you know, you're gonna have access to a lot of these grants and information to these things that the public doesn't have as easy of access to. So it just, it raises a question about some favorability that comes to light there. And oh yeah, Packet Digital was using a company called Chip Tronics as their manufacturer, which.
And this is the even bigger deal. You, you, you got into the mud there, honestly. Getting out of the mud.
Yeah, Chiptronics. Yes, I, I was coming full circle here.
I almost forgot.
I was getting there. I had to tie, I had to knock down this one horse. So finally. Chiptronics, I don't know what that's saying even as that was weird. So Chiptronics is listed as the manufacturer for Packet Digital for the, uh, a lot of the microchips and things that go into the batteries that they're making, a lot of the circuitry. However, interestingly, now, so two specific grants are received, one in twenty seventeen, one in twenty nineteen. Specifically, the one in twenty nineteen, um, in the NDIC meeting, it was said that Chiptronics will expect to create ninety-three jobs from their part of this grant. While lo and behold, Chiptronics in twenty nineteen wasn't even the leaseholder of the facility that they were claiming to be working in. And on top of that, they weren't in good standing with the state. Their manufacturing codes had, some of them had expired at that point. And even on top of that, they, with the Defense Logistics Agency, uh, company that you have to register with to make a lot of these defense parts. They weren't listed as a manufacturer. They were listed as a non-manufacture. So, this is the company that was, yeah, supposed to be making the chips for these projects and I don't know.
I don't know, man. Go to mydakon.com. You can check out that article. You can check out more.
Yeah, should have a follow up actually. Maybe at the end of this week, I just received an email from uh, Karen Hyler, the director of the NDIC with some follow up information. So I look forward to, if it's relevant, I'll be getting that out.
For sure, for sure. Well, uh, another great episode, man.
I loved it. Every day, my guy. Look forward to it.
Well, we don't do it every day, but we do do it on. You look forward to it every day.
Yes, and actually, should we address the daily brief? Okay, so Thursday morning then, we will be back at nine AM.
We'll be back at nine AM.
Uh, I'll have some great polling information to share with everybody and.
Oh yeah, yeah. Prelim polls, anything interesting? Or you don't even wanna touch it?
I will. How about this? In, so I have, it's, it's a six question poll. Uh, one of them, it's, it's asking some favorability ratings for some of our top, uh, top government officials. And wow, I'm actually up to forty-three now. So shout out to everybody that's been responding over the last, uh, since we've been doing this. Uh, the interesting one I'll, I'll throw out there is Governor Kelly Armstrong. So we, he has been in office since January effectively.
He's gotta have a high favorability rating.
So far, yeah, forty-six and a half percent are unsure, undecided or indifferent towards him. So effectively the undecided, indifferent, unsure, it's, it's.
Who's Kelly Armstrong?
Yeah, that's, that's what it is. It's for those that maybe aren't super engaged on a subject. Or indifferent, maybe it's in his case or Fedorichek's case, it's too soon to tell. So for Armstrong, he has a net favorability rating of what? About twelve percent? He has an twenty-one percent disagreeable or disapproval. And he has a thirty-three percent approval. Uh, so you're netting about, what, eleven percent there? So as of right now, it's very early. I'm still looking to get, I wanna, uh, like triple the numbers I have here. So we're looking early still, but I, I think it's, it's interesting to show that he has a pretty wide net approval rating in comparison to the other statewide officials who I won't get into the specifics, but as of yet, it doesn't look like they're going to be having
The longer you're there, the worse it gets.
Hey, it happens.
It happens. Alright, well, we'll be back, um.
Thursday.
Thursday. On the way out though, have a shout out for the Downtown Association. Um, they're having their annual Straight Up and Toasted event. Uh, this is gonna be on June thirteenth. Enjoy a great evening of signature bourbon, great cigars and other spirits, along with a chance to bid on great prizes, including a VIP tour of the Neely Distillery in Sparta, Kentucky. Tickets are still available at downtownminot.com.
Yeah, shout out Downtown Minot. A friend of the show, Corey Long, those guys have a podcast going now too, talking about some uh, happenings in the downtown areas. Make sure you check them out and always check out the Straight Up and Toasted event too.
There you go. Well, it's been a, another great show, of course. Make sure you check out the mayoral debate too. You can go to mydakon.com slash mayoral debate. We'll be posting some updates. Uh, asking you for questions and a whole lot of other stuff. So looking forward to that as well. Um, and then Thursday, nine AM, we'll be back. Talk, we'll have some polling data.
We'll go over the election results, talk about what comes next. It's gonna be a great show.
It's gonna be a good time. So thank you for watching this episode of Minotalk and have a great rest of your day.